Welcome, everyone, to the May 21 City Council Work Session. I just will say this right now, this is just a request because the neighborhood conference is starting this evening, and I know that Councilor Taylor would like some more information about time and as much information she can have about the whole thing, I think, so if you could get her that, that would be great. Thank you. All right. Done. Okay. First up, we're going to do the second item first, which is, Councilor Poling has a motion to make.
Thank you. And I was in contact with Jennifer Yeh day before yesterday from the Harlem Neighborhood Associations, and the negotiations between the attorneys and everything is still ongoing. They haven't yet reached a final decision, but they're getting ever so closer. So what I'm going to propose is to postpone the work session for today and have it rescheduled. In doing that, I move to direct the city manager to reschedule the work session on the possible initiation of a Metro Plan Diagram Amendment for 955 Colbert Road to a date before the council's summer recess unless the Neighborhood Association and property owner notify the city manager that the parties have reached a settlement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, six, seven, and in opposition, passives. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll hope that we never hear from them again.
That would be the best outcome.
But in a good way. In a good way. Okay. Does it mean that it's settled to everybody's? Okay. So sidewalks and trees, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Mike Snyder and his team.
Good afternoon. The purpose of this work session is to allow for review and discussion of city code and policies related to sidewalks and trees. Specifically, what happens when a city street tree damages a sidewalk, and who is responsible for repairs, and who's liable for any accident that may happen because of a safety hazard? I'm joined by Eric Johnson here, Surface Operations Manager for Public Works Maintenance. He'll give you some information on sidewalks in the city, and then I'll provide some background on the city's urban forestry program as it relates to this issue. After this introduction, we'll be here to answer any questions you might have. Eric?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to come in today. As Mark said, Eric Johnson, Surface Operations Manager. My work section at Public Works Maintenance oversees road maintenance, sidewalks, utility permits, pavement management system, and our sweeping program, and also our sidewalk inspection program. So I'd like to take a few minutes just to talk about, you know, our sidewalk system, the associated city codes that pertain to maintenance, repair liability, and the property owner's responsibility, and what type of options they have to mitigate hazards when one is found in front of their property. There's about 750 miles of sidewalks within the city limits. Of that, about 90% abut private property. The other 10% abut either city facilities or parklands. Safe and clean, hazard-free sidewalks play an important role in supporting mobility, livability in our community. To achieve this, construction standards for sidewalks and access connections have been established and are inspected. To maintain and repair our sidewalk system, language regarding the responsibility can be found in Chapter 7 of Eugene Code. As described in 7.375 of this code, the adjacent property owner whose land abuts the sidewalk is responsible to maintain the sidewalk, curb, and access connection, and the access connection is better known as a driveway apron, in good repair and safe condition. This code is not unique to Eugene. Most jurisdictions around the country have similar language in that respect. Additionally, property owners shall be liable for injury, damage, loss to person or property caused by owner's failure to maintain the sidewalk in safe condition. For those sidewalks adjacent to city facilities and properties, maintenance and repair is a responsibility of the city Eugene and the Public Works Maintenance Division. Also included in Chapter 7 is the notification process that we use for noncompliance as it pertains to maintaining safe sidewalks. Also in city code under 2.020 provides the authority for the city to recover costs of repair if city resources are used to perform a repair due to the lack of response by the property owner after proper notification has been given. There are a variety of sidewalk distresses that we find that cause hazards. The most common that we find are tree root conflicts. Additionally, heavy vehicle loads, expansive soils here in Eugene, and aging infrastructure also are types of distresses that cause hazards. We recently did a survey of a random selection of 300 noncompliance letters that we sent out, and we found that 65% of the identified hazards in those letters were related to both public and private trees. In all cases, the city sidewalk inspector worked with the property owners, and those areas have been mitigated, the hazards have been mitigated. Typically, the repair consists of removing either a sidewalk panel and replacing it, or doing just a simple grind, which is usually our first option. It's a cost-saving practice. And also, the options for repairs for property owners is that they can either do it themselves, hire a contractor, or if resources are available, enter into a contract with Public Works to have that work completed. No matter what option that a citizen chooses, our sidewalk inspector will work with them through the process, especially when it becomes a tree issue, to work with, to be the liaison between urban forestry and the property owner to get that done in an efficient manner. Our sidewalk inspector, who's been doing this for, going on 20 years now, found that most property owners are aware that they're responsible for maintaining the sidewalk in front of their home. An example of that would be, you know, cleaning up debris, shoveling snow, or mowing the planter strip if one's adjacent to their property. Less obvious to the property owners is that they find out that they're responsible for actually doing repairs to the sidewalk infrastructure. And the least obvious to property owners, in his opinion, is the fact that they find out that they're liable for any injury that may occur. So that was from his opinion after 20 years of doing this. So that's the information I have right now, and I'd be open for answering questions when Mark gets done.
Thanks, Eric. I'd like to give you some background on Eugene's tree policies and regulations, and then talk about some of our current urban forestry activities and practices around this issue. And finally, give a biological and spatial perspective on the problems and these issues over time, just to give you a broader perspective of who has this problem? Do we only have it in Eugene? We don't. In 1992, the council adopted some policies through the Urban Forest Management Plan that helped guide how we manage the urban forest in Eugene. As a result of that, in 1996, Eugene Code was adopted that established the developer's street tree program that requires street trees to be planted in new development that creates new right-of-way. Soon after that, we adopted the administrative rule for the code, the developer's street tree program, and that establishes our standards in the cities for tree planting, tree establishment, tree pruning, and tree protection. We also adopted with the administrative rule, an appendix, that is, the approved street tree species list. And that list was developed with a matrix that actually sets minimum width planter strips on different soil types to allow for planting the right tree in the right place and making sure we minimize damage both to sidewalks and to overhead utilities. 2004, we had an update to that tree species list, and we removed Norway maple because it was an invasive plant, but we also removed sweetgum trees because they're one of the most frequently problematic trees, causing damage to infrastructure sidewalks, curbs, gutters, streets, and so forth. Also, in 2004, we instituted what we call the Maintenance Removal Permit Program, where we allow citizens to remove trees that are unhealthy, or in bad condition, or causing minor damage to sidewalks and so forth, without having the burden of paying the $80 application fee. Some of the current activities and practices, we're currently in the process of updating the species list again, and we hope to have that adopted by the end of this calendar year. And that's going to delete more trees that we have found through experience that are causing problems with blowing out sidewalks or curbs and gutters. Red maple, of all things, is one of the most commonly planted trees, overly planted, in my opinion, but it's also causing a lot of damage in some of our newer subdivisions, even when they're pretty young, not this big, but they're causing problems when they're only this big, so we're going to take action on that. We're also going to be adding, with this updated list, a much higher number of available species that we think will be appropriate for the different spots, and also that are going to be resilient for predictions for climate change in the city. We're continually trying to find new techniques, methods, and tools to handle this problem. Trip Stop is a patented device that you can put into concrete when you're pouring new panels. It fits in the joint between the two panels, and what it does is, if there is a tree root lifting the sidewalk, it lifts it together like this, as opposed to one panel going like this and causing that vertical trip hazard. We've actually used it in a number of cases so far, and we think it's going to extend the life of sidewalk panels significantly. Another thing trying out, actually, over at Capstone, we were using TERRA Walks, which is 100% recycled plastic modular sidewalk system. And the reason I required that during the tree removal permit for that project was in order to try to preserve the existing trees on Olive Street. Most sidewalks, when you have to build a new sidewalk, require a depth of excavation about this deep, six to eight inches, and the TERRA Walks only requires four inches. So we were able to put TERRA Walks between the existing trees without impacting their root system. So that's another way that we might be able to get some experience with different techniques, different materials that might help us in fighting this ongoing issue with tree roots and sidewalks. We're also using root barriers, plastic, just hard plastic root barriers that are just sheets of plastic 18, 24 inches deep, and they're planted around each of the new trees that are being planted at Capstone. We don't have a lot of experience with root barriers here in Eugene. The jury is out, in my opinion, professionally, after 35 years, as to whether or not they work or they're cost-effective. We'll find out. We'll gain some experience here. We also, just this year, updated a new city standard planting detail for how to plant a tree in an urban area surrounded by sidewalks, a tree pit and a grate, typical tree pit and a grate, that has expanded rooting zone of uncompacted soil underneath the sidewalk that will allow for deeper penetration of roots, as opposed to forcing them up closer underneath the sidewalk. Here's a little bit of discussion about some perspectives on why this problem happens, and are we the only ones that suffer it? Normal root growth, this is my only audio visual aid, and this is actually a line drawing, a scaled line drawing of an actual tree and an actual root system from the Morton Arboretum in Illinois. It shows you that normal trees' roots grow out. They don't grow down. So it's not a mirror image of the top of the tree. Trees don't go down to China like I thought they did when I was a kid. They grow out laterally to quite an extent. And the best way I can encourage you to think about tree roots is to have this mental image in your mind, a wine glass sitting on a large serving platter on your table. So the wine glass is the tree, the stem of the wine glass is the trunk of the tree, the cup itself is the crown of the tree, the branches. The root system is not just the base of the wine glass, it's that large platter. So tree roots go out to quite an extent. So they're opportunistic, they grow where oxygen is available, and water is available, and nutrients are available. And generally, 95% of all tree roots are in the top 18 to 24 inches of soil, because that's where those three things exist. There are some rare exceptions, and there's some in downtown Eugene that I've run into, and all of us professional tree experts have wound up scratching our heads, saying, "Where are the roots?" Well, 13 feet deep, we found them over at the Tenth and Mill Building when that was built. So there are some exceptions, but that's where roots grow. And as you can imagine, in a four-to-five-foot planter strip, there's not a lot of room for trees to grow normally and expand out that way. This is a worldwide problem. It happens anywhere, trees grow near sidewalks. The most important factor, what are the local soils and weather conditions like? In most of the U.S., where there's more cold weather and freezing weather during the winter, the problems with sidewalks being lifted up are with freezing and thawing of the soil. The soil expands as it freezes and causes cracks in the sidewalks. Here, we don't have freezing and thawing as much as we have what Eric described as our expansive soils, the Amazon clay soils, just shrink and swell with the dry and wet weather, as opposed to the freezing and thawing weather. Sandy soils in California, this problem, this issue of tree roots and sidewalks began to be studied in the literature, in arboriculture literature in our profession in the '70s, and they really started studying it in California where there's sandy soils. That's where root barriers were invented. What they found out was the reason the roots were growing up underneath the sidewalk is because it's so hot down there that the sidewalk itself heated up during the day, and in the evening, as it got cooler, water condensed right underneath the sidewalk in that subbase, the gravel base underneath the sidewalk. Roots don't seek it out, but roots, each root extends 10 to 12 inches a year, just like the top twig does, and it found favorable conditions underneath the sidewalk. That's why they invented root barriers. So in that sandy soil, the root, hit the root barrier, went down, continued to grow underneath the sidewalk, by the time it got back up into the rooting area, it was in someone's front yard instead of right underneath the sidewalk pushing up. So as I said, the jury's out as to whether roots can actually do that in the kinds of the soil we have here. We don't have a sandy soil, and we don't think that the root barriers will be as effective at guiding the roots as they will be in simply limiting root growth. But in that respect, it may limit sidewalk damage. We'll find out. Trees planted in the Whittaker neighborhood, I know for a fact, because someone called me up once and said her grandfather planted the trees on Adams Street. This is in 1999, 2000, when we had an issue down there with tree removal. She said he planted them in 1917, so a lot of the trees in the downtown area are almost 100 years old now, and when you think about it, and when I think about it, they really, comparatively, don't, haven't really exhibited that many problems with sidewalks in 100 years' time. And that's probably because of the soil type down there in downtown Eugene. It's a well-drained, rich, fertile, sandy river loam soil. When the trees were planted, the area around them, the soil was not compacted, so they had plenty of opportunity to extend their roots out into yards and so forth without busting up the sidewalks. What we're experiencing now, in the more modern era, are some significant problems with the way subdivisions are built, modern methods of constructing houses. The first thing that happens is you strip all the topsoil from the site, you either stockpile it or sell it. Then you start grading that clay subsoil and pushing it around and compacting it. And then, when you're ready to build the street infrastructure, what you do is dig a big trench and put all the utilities in the trench, that's inside the planter strip, which is only five-and-a-half foot wide usually. Take two feet of that and put this big trench, put utilities in it, backfill that with gravel, maybe put another trench in for streetlights, compact the heck out of that, put some more subsoil on top of that, compact that to get your final grade, put a couple inches of starter soil on top of that, and lay your sod on top of that, and plant your tree in that, and expect it to grow and thrive. Because of that compacted soil, and because most homeowners are irrigating that nice new sod every day or every other day for about five minutes, what happens? The roots can't grow down because of compacted soil, and they are encouraged to grow up near the surface because of that constant watering, which encourages that surface rooting. So we're working on trying to figure out solutions for these challenges that we're met with in the newer subdivisions, to try to figure out how to get a better plant growth environment for the new trees that we plant. Just in summary, there's no panacea to this issue. There's no easy fix. We're trying to plant the right tree in the right place. We do have this matrix that says for Amazon clay soils, well, the problem with sweet, the good thing about sweetgums is that they grow like angbusters in poor Amazon clay soil. The problem with sweetgums is that they grow like angbusters in poor Amazon clay soils, and they break up sidewalks and curbs. So we try to find the right tree and put it in the right place to begin with. We realize that trees do have benefits, and the U.S. Forest Service did a study back around 2004 of trees, street trees, in Oregon and Washington, and found out, analyzing all of the costs and all the benefits, all the ecosystem service benefits and other benefits that trees provide, and they compared that to all the costs, not just planting, and establishment, and watering, and pruning, and taking the tree down when it's dead, but also the infrastructure costs, the sidewalk damage, other damage that's caused. And in that benefit-cost ratio analysis, they found out for, in Oregon, street trees over a 40-year life provide $2.70 in benefits for every dollar you spend on maintaining those trees over that time. So we know that trees are good. That's probably one of the things that drove the city of Eugene to adopt policies establishing planting in trees and protection of trees, but we also work every day in urban forestry with the problems that trees cause, especially with sidewalks. We're working with the Public Works Maintenance City Sidewalk Inspector almost on a weekly basis. Every week, there's another issue. So what we want to do is to try to do the right thing. That's what we always try to do at each location. We try to give very good customer service, and we try to do the right thing while we're following the established policies, and we try to be consistent from place to place. This concludes our background remarks, and we're here for your questions, if you have some.
So, Greg, and Alan, and George Brown. I wanted to start out by saying a couple things that I think, in general, everybody here loves our trees. And I always think about when you're landing your plane in our area, feel this, I don't know, exhaling that happens if you're back in this place with this lush, green environment. And I've always sort of thought of Eugene, in many places, it's the built structures that define the city, and I always think it's the natural structures that are our urban forest, our buttes, our rivers that define where we live, and our built environment is sort of secondary, as opposed to... I also want to say how much I have appreciated, as mayor, all those jobs you've taken me on for Arbor Days, year after year after year, and I wanted to ask you for a moment to talk to people about our relationship with other groups in keeping, building our urban forest.
Other groups?
Like Friends of Trees, like Tree Foundation, whatever you want to...
Yeah. We know that in any city, and especially in Eugene, it's really important, we can't survive just being a bureaucratic government organization that goes out and plants trees and prunes trees. We have to leverage our capabilities and our limited budgets for planting trees. For example, with gaining the cooperation of our nonprofit volunteers, it used to be called Eugene Tree Foundation, now it's Friends of Trees. They're actually a part of the Portland Friends of Trees Organization, the Willamette Valley Chapter of Friends of Trees. And we actually have contracts with them for actually using some of our capital fund money to plant some of our replacement street trees. We used to replace trees just automatically, our own tree crews. We'd come down, take a tree down that was diseased, grind a stump, plant the tree the same day, oftentimes. It's very satisfying, but unsustainable with our budget and resources. So we work closely with groups such as Friends of Trees, and also neighborhood associations to use volunteers through our Eugene Park Stewards, for example, planting trees in our parks and on streets. We've also established a partnership with them for helping us do tree maintenance through some of the tree steward work that we did with Eugene Tree Foundation, people, citizen volunteers actually pruning trees and helping us prune trees in parks and on the streets.
I also wanted to say that I love sweetgums. I'm sorry they're such a problem. They're a beautiful, beautiful tree. So I had a tree in the median strip, the strip that's out there between the street and your sidewalk, which we have trees in. If something happens to that sidewalk, it seems like part of that is the property owners, and part of that really belongs to the city, right? The strip?
The...
I can answer that question.
Well, I would say typically, the property line is usually about a foot outside of the sidewalk, so closer to your house. So from that point to the curb is a city right of way.
Right. I'm just pointing out, that makes me think about it as a sort of a shared responsibility in terms of ownership, right?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. And I think that's... Oh, what's the name of the material that you mentioned that you're, by Capstone, that you're using for the...
TERRA Walks.
How do you spell it?
T-E-R-R-E, capital W-A-L-K-S. Google TERRA Walks, and you'll find out. They have installation manuals, lots of information on the web.
Thank you. Okay, Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. I think this is an excellent presentation. One of the reasons I brought this up for a work session is because when I came on council, I had a number of neighbors and other people within my ward, most notably in the newer subdivisions, talking about specifically the issues of knowledge of what the law is, and who is responsible for maintaining the sidewalk when a tree that is planted, that has been basically mandated by the urban forestry policy, is planted into that tree lawn areas, what we call them backies, you don't call them means, but tree lawn kind of situation. And the surprise that they have that, you know, a tree that is mandated to be planted by the city is ultimately causing damage to city property, basically the sidewalk, and that the property owner is responsible for paying for the repaired fixing of the sidewalk. I've got that situation in front of my house, my neighbor has it in front of his, people across the street in front of theirs, and so we know that we have to replace that, you know, particular deal. The issue comes with, you know, the questions have been about the types of trees that have been planted, whether they are compatible, or they force more of this to happen. I know that there were some people that I have talked to who have had those trees, those types of trees, replaced by other trees by the city. And so what I'm looking for in this is, is there a middle ground? Is there a mitigation where the onus does not have to be totally on the property owner to deal with something that essentially is more or less an urban forestry problem of the city, in my estimation? But, you know, we have, you know, policy language that says different, we have code language that says different. Is there a way that we can formulate? Because there's a lot of people that, you know, do not have the resources to replace, you know, sidewalk panels. They just don't. Particularly in this economy, and, you know, there are a lot of people that feel that this is flat-out not fair. Is there ways that we can, you know, plant different species? I understand that roots grow out this way, but possibly there are some other species that can be planted in these median strips that are not going to so-called affect the sidewalk environment in a draconian way, as it does now? Because I see this all over the city. So if I can get another round, Mayor.
What I'd give...
Sure. The policies are the policies, and the code is the code, and we have to follow that, and I'm sure you understand that. As I said, Councilor Evans, there is no panacea, there's no easy answer. We, I, as an urban forester professional, have been looking for my 35-year career for that magic tree that's not going to cause those sidewalk problems. As I said, the problems are usually exacerbated and accentuated by the soil type and matching with the tree, and we learn as we go. And I've learned in my career that I thought Bradford pear was a great tree. I used to live near the USDA Plant Introduction Station in Glendale, Maryland, where Bradford pears were actually invented, but I've seen what happens to the crown of those trees, even though I planted hundreds and thousands of them in the '70s and '80s. We learned the hard way through experience that they're not a good tree, that they blow apart in storms. We've learned that sweetgum trees... We've learned that sweet gum trees are not good for urban areas and sidewalks, and so we've stopped planting those. A lot of the tree issues that we deal with are actually the result of trees that were planted before our approved street tree species list. So, sometimes there's just trees that are not meant for an urban area, such as giant sequoias or coast redwoods in a six-foot or nine-foot planter strip. We have to deal with those on a case-by-case basis. But I appreciate what you said about the problems you're talking about being, coming from a newer subdivision because, and what may be happening there is some of the things that I just mentioned, that what happens during the construction and development of the street right of way and the housing construction doesn't leave a very good rooting zone for trees. And it actually makes the tree roots grow near the surface and underneath the sidewalk. So, that makes the problem worse. There are some things that we can do, educating homeowners to go out, yes, start with the right tree. And if it's a red maple that's causing that problem, we're not going to plant a red maple back there. We know that. You can use shovels at the edge of the sidewalk early to start pruning roots when they're small to discourage those roots growing underneath the sidewalk. That's part of what we feel is our responsibility in public education to try to help people in situations like this. And again, as I said, we try to provide excellent customer service by working very closely with each resident and with the sidewalk inspector to say, "Well, this is the problem." Let me just walk you through a typical approach. When we have a problem, the first thing that I always do, or urban forestry technician does, when we come to a problem like this, is we look at the tree itself. Sometimes the tree is a hazard tree. We are, the city's responsible for maintaining the trees in the right of way. Property owner's responsible for maintaining the grass strip, the lawn and shrubs. First thing we do is, is the tree a hazard tree? If so, we take care of it. We remove the tree and plant a more appropriate tree. Second thing is, that we say is, if during the repairs to make a safe sidewalk, roots are going to be cut that would make that tree fall over or be unstable, we remove that tree. The city removes it at our expense. We post the tree for 15 days to let people know it might be a removal. We won't know sometimes until we remove the sidewalk and see what the condition of the root system is. Our default is to try to preserve the tree, but we only will do that if we can make repairs that we know will last for five years. We don't want to say, "Well, this is a sweet gum tree. You need to keep the tree here. You need to repair the sidewalk." And, but we don't want the sidewalk to be blown out again in two more years. So, we try to anticipate a five-year life of that tree. So, our default is to preserve a tree if it's possible by cutting as few tree roots as possible or ramping a sidewalk over. But we're acutely aware that it is the property owner, adjacent property owner, who is responsible for making those repairs. We don't take that lightly.
Alan?
So, yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. We do, we do love our trees and trees love it here. That's why we have so many. Every time I travel and I come back, I look around and go, "Wow, we have a lot of trees." And it actually makes our city really beautiful and our neighborhood's beautiful. I recently had to take out a over 100-year-old willow tree that was about 50 inches at breast height because it succumbed during the last ice storm and it had 100-foot wingspan. And so, I know about roots. Willow trees aren't on street tree list, are they?
No.
Good.
No.
I know why. The roots went all over 100 feet away. How many years are we, 40 years Tree City USA?
35.
35. 35, okay. That's great. Can a homeowner remove a street tree prophylactically to prevent sidewalk damage?
Not prophylactically to prevent sidewalk damage. However, one of the things we do when we come up to that typical example is we go through the steps that I talked about. But we also, one of the steps I didn't mention is, I talked about the maintenance removal permit that we instituted in 2004. If the tree is causing some minor damage to the sidewalk or curb or driveway, if the tree's not on the approved street tree species list, or if it's a tree that we know through experience, red maple, for example, is on the approved street tree species list right now, but we know that in especially newer subdivisions, it's causing problems, then we will allow the homeowner to remove that tree without charging them for a permit, without charging them to pay the appraised value as code otherwise allows. We let them do that. So, in some ways, the answer to your question is yes. It's not, yes, you can remove the tree because it might, at some point in the future, cause some damage, but we're also reasonable. And if it's beginning to cause a little bit of damage and we know it's not going to get any better, then we let that, let that tree be removed.
But you have to get a permit for that?
Yes. Always have to have a permit to remove a tree in the right of way in the city of Eugene.
How much is the permit?
$80 is the cost of the permit application fee.
And if you just go out and cut the tree down, you have to pay the appraised value of the tree back to the city?
There are potential penalties allowed by code. $4,000 penalty up to and including a $2,000 administrative civil penalty, payment of the appraised value of the tree, and a potential citation to municipal court with a jail sentence of one to 100 days for each violation.
And if they get, gets removed, can the homeowner request not to put a tree in front of their house?
Sure. We always try to replace the trees with trees that are appropriate. Some, in some locations, the tree never should have been planted there. If the planter width is less than four feet of soil, we will not replant a tree there. If the tree that we're removing is in a vision-clear zone, we will not require replacement of the tree. But typically, if there's room to replace the tree, we do require a replacement.
And who pays for the street tree?
The city of Eugene, through its partnership with Friends of Trees, will plant the tree for a nominal cost. I think their charge to homeowners now is $40 to plant a tree.
And if we were to take over all of the repair and maintenance of sidewalks because of trees, do you have any guess at what the cost would be, any of you here?
First of all, we don't have, we haven't done that assessment, so I couldn't tell you right now, you know, what the backlog of maintenance and repair for sidewalks is. We do have a fee schedule that we charge and I included that in the, in your packet. One thing I would like to add is that if a, if a property owner goes into contract with the city, and this goes back to Counselor Evans' remarks, we do, we do the repair and if that same street tree causes additional hazards, the city will repair that at no charge if it was the original homeowner that paid for that service. So, if they have a replacement, we'll come back in and replace it for no cost. If it was a grind, we will do the same thing. So, we do offer that extra service, only related to street trees.
So, can you get, is it hundreds of thousands, millions, if we took over the repair and maintenance on an annual basis?
Yeah, it would be a big number. It would be in the millions.
Kurt's going like this. It would be a huge number. So, we don't know, but it's going to be huge. Do we, have we ever had, or could we put together, I was thinking about when Counselor Evans was talking about people having a hard time paying for some of this stuff. Is there a loan fund that we could have had or could establish that would help people pay for the repair costs? Maybe they haven't paid out over a year, so it's much more reasonable for them to be able to do it?
I mean, currently in our fee schedule, we don't have that option. I can't speak if that could, that could occur. Kurt knows.
We've never done that before?
Yeah. I think, for the most part, these types of repairs are comparatively small. I would suppose it would be conceivable that if you, if you pursued a much broader citywide program with larger assessments, that payment options would be available similar to what's available through the local improvement district assessment project would certainly be possible. Probably not typically something that would, that would apply to a, you know, several, several hundred-dollar assessment as, as most of these would be.
Yeah, okay. And just for folks that are watching, where would they be able to find the rate schedule for the maintenance and repair on the city's, on the website?
You can go to the city's website, the maintenance division, and there's a sidewalk safety webpage. And there's a lot of detail, frequently asked questions, the fees, the phone numbers to our sidewalk inspector.
Okay, good. Thanks.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine Eugene without our urban forest, the way, you know, you drive, especially down here in the central part of town, and it's 105 degrees out downtown and you pull under that canopy over in the older central neighborhoods and the temperature drops about 15 degrees. It's just wonderful. And it'll be the same in all the new subdivisions. Once they grow up, it'll be, it'll look just like the central area. We're not unique in that. My hometown, Wichita, Kansas, has got a magnificent urban forest, which you'd see when you fly in, if you ever have occasion to do that. After flying over thousands of square miles of wheat fields and then all of a sudden there's this big green area and you go through the town and it's the same. Pull under that canopy, it's 115 degrees there. And it's just, it's magnificent. So, I think, and I appreciate Counselor Evans bringing this forward, I was faced with having to take care of a sidewalk problem at our store downtown. And I think the residents get the surprise, everyone, I think everyone knows you're responsible for mowing and keeping the parking strip clear. Otherwise, the city will come and charge you to do the work. But I think a lot of people get a surprise. They go, "What? The sidewalk is buckling and it's my fault? I didn't choose the tree. I didn't..." And maybe it's an unsuitable tree, but it wasn't my choice in the first place. And I think the natural reaction is, "Why should I have to pay for that?" I mean, we would, of course, we went ahead and did it, but... And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you say that, let's say it happens again a second time, it starts buckling again, and the city pays the second time?
If they go into contract with us and we do the repair the first time, yes. And if it's a city street tree, we will do the additional repair if it's the same homeowner or business owner that went into contract with us.
Yeah. And the same tree causing the problem?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, now I've got a couple of questions. I'm probably need another round. I got a couple of questions. I'm looking at the administrative order, which is Attachment D. And these are the maintenance services that the city will provide on request to private parties to correct sidewalk problem caused by a tree. And I'm looking at the schedule of raids. I just want to make sure I have this straight. So, sidewalk replacement, there's a $300 mobilization fee plus $7 per square foot. That's going down four inches. And I assume you would replace it with Terrawalks if it's only a four-inch concrete?
No, we would, we would excavate down to a hard surface, you know, good soil, build it up with rock. And that, that four inches is the depth of the concrete that we're replacing it with.
I see.
In a typical, in our average repair, we're repairing typically two panels and they're five-by-fives. So, an average repair would be about $650.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I get that same math. Yeah, with a $300 mobilization fee and then two panels, each panel at $175.
I'll get you in the next round, George.
Okay.
Patty?
Thanks. First, I assume that a Leland cypress wouldn't be a street tree, right?
Correct.
They have very shallow roots, do they?
All tree roots are shallow.
You said there are, you said with exceptions.
Some exceptions.
Okay. Yeah, it's amazing to me when a tree falls, that there's no root there.
Yeah. And someone was just telling me about that. I think it was actually Kurt Corey who was, I was, I showed him this picture of where tree roots grow. And he said, "Well, that's not the ponderosa pine tree root system that fell over in my yard because it was only yay big." And I said, "Well, that's why it fell because all those other roots rotted back to this little tiny core and plug. And when the wind blew it over in the winter storm, that's why you only see that little bit of root system."
I see. If you have, if there's a tree that, and you don't know whether it's a street tree or not, will someone from the city come out and tell one?
Hopefully, we don't spend the time coming out because we have this thing called...
That would be no, there's no sidewalk where I live.
Right. We have Google Earth maps now, Street View Maps. So, I will sit at my desk and take a call, and this happens frequently, and our other forestry technicians do this too. And lots of times, we get questions, "Whose tree is this?" And we'll just look at Google Maps. We have ASCONSTRUCT drawings in our database at our computer so we can tell where exactly the property line is from the ASCONSTRUCT drawing. And then we can usually look at a, at a Google Earth map and tell whether or not the tree is in the right of way or not. Sometimes we have to do a site visit because, especially in the South Hills, there's so much forest canopy, we can't tell where that property line is.
And your car needs washing, too.
So, if, so if I call you about a tree, you can tell me if it's a street tree or not?
Yes, ma'am.
And this, this already happened. It's not, it's in front of the house next door, but it did tear up my driveway and I already, years ago, paid to replace it. But I don't suppose I can retroactively get some money, but if I had, would the city have been liable for that, if that is a street tree?
If, a street tree, is the city liable for damage that a street tree causes to your driveway?
Yeah.
No.
That's good to know if it happens again. Does that plastic, I have several questions here. Is that plastic layer, does that hurt the tree?
I'm sorry?
You said you're putting down plastic, a plastic...
Root barrier.
Root barrier, yeah. Does that hurt the tree?
That's a real good question. That's a sophisticated question because when the root barriers are placed vertically next to the sidewalk edge, as the tree root system grows towards that root barrier, it's going to hit the root barrier and then try to go down. And if there's good, well-drained soil, the, what it's designed to do is to allow the roots to grow down deeper, down below the 18-inch root barrier, go underneath the sidewalk and then raise back towards the soil surface in someone's front yard. But if it's a poorly drained soil, when the root hits that plastic root barrier and goes down, it only goes down six or eight inches and then the roots begin to drown because they're plugged with water. And in that respect, that root barrier is limiting the plant root growth.
About the sweet gums, that, I think they don't, they aren't even sold anymore, but the ones that drop the balls on the sidewalk, is, if it's a street tree and it's dropping those all over at a certain time of year and it is a hazard, who's, who's responsible for that?
You know, I have a personal prejudice against sweet gums because I tripped and sprained my ankle about 35 years ago pruning a sweet gum tree. I've had calls from Eugene citizens who have said, "Please come and remove this tree because I tripped and sprained my ankle in my backyard walking on these." So, we take that into account. The city code talks about trees that are hazardous or that are nuisances. As to whether or not the city has liability for that, I would defer to the city attorney.
I know the case isn't in my, on my street, but where someone has these trees, they're street, obviously, street trees because they're on the other side of the sidewalk. And they drop the balls all over the sidewalk and this person hates them, hates the trees because of that. Would the city remove those trees?
If, if it's a sweet gum tree and it's causing damage, the city would remove the tree.
Not causing damage to the sidewalk, I don't think, but it is causing a hazard.
We, we take that into account and we, we try to interpret, we try to do the right thing with the tree code and the nuisance vegetation code in mind. In other words, if it is a nuisance, we will remove the tree as a nuisance tree, yes.
Okay, thank you. My only comment about that is almost every tree does something. And that you will have to go out and, and clean up after, right?
We don't remove trees because you're tired of raking the leaves.
We had a Hawthorne and our neighbor removed his out in front of his house because he said it was way too sexy. Did something every time of the year.
Hi. It's nice to see you again. I just went to Peterson Barn and visited the trees that we planted at last year's Arbor Day. They're still looking really nice. I just had a question. We were talking about already established neighborhoods and new subdivisions. You know, I have some parts of my ward that don't have any sidewalks right now. No, I'm not thinking of Santa Clara. That may, in future years, get sidewalks. And I'm wondering... of Santa Clara. That may, in future years, get sidewalks, and I'm wondering how the urban tree program interacts in that kind of circumstance.
When we, we've had what used to be the Neighborhoods Volunteer Tree Planting Program, and I remember oftentimes we would get requests to, "I want my free tree through the Neighborhoods Program." And we tried to avoid planting trees in undeveloped right-of-way, but in cases where someone really did want a tree, there are times when we would plant a tree where there's an undeveloped street, and we would simply try to take into account what's really going on here. Are they likely to ever get a sidewalk? Is this street likely ever to be improved fully with sidewalk and curb and gutter and street trees? We try to take that into account. And when we do take that into account, the times when we did plant street trees, we would try to anticipate where a future sidewalk might go. So we would plant the tree four feet back from where the curb would go if the curb ever did go in. Or sometimes, if there's 15 feet of right-of-way, we would plant this tree in what would seem like the resident's front yard that is actually in city right-of-way, well behind where the sidewalk would go, even if it were a setback sidewalk.
So if we were to miraculously come up with some extra funds and decide that certain neighborhoods wanted to improve their streets and put in sidewalks, then planting trees would be part of that improvement?
A typical full improvement does include street trees. Street trees, street lights, sidewalk, curb, and gutter.
That was, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, round two. Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. One of the things, and I'm not anti-tree. I've got a great tree in my backyard. I love it. It provides me lots of shade, and I'm cool with it. It's the one in the front of the yard that I've got issues with. But one of the things I think people in our community do not understand fully, and I think this could be part of a campaign in terms of public education is street or is tree policy. And I think that that could be best affected through working with the neighborhood associations and doing presentations out there. Because most of us don't know this, and the information that you're giving us is really informative and is excellent. However, most people out there do not know, and a lot of folks in our community don't have access to the internet. And some of the ways that they interact are through the neighborhood associations and getting the message out. And I think that, you know, if we had kind of just a basic Tree 101, urban environment kind of, you know, information piece, even a one-sheeter or something of that nature, that would really help in terms of getting people to understand what their responsibility is as far as the tree lawn area, the side rock, and the trees itself, and what they're, you know, what they can do as property owners and working with the city to, you know, have the best outcome possible. So I believe that, you know, we should look at doing those kinds of things that will help people understand. Because I know when people find out that they've got to pay for a sidewalk replacement, you know, they'll call me on the phone, and their head's about to explode. And I understand why. And the other thing, too, is there are other subdivisions that are being built out my way now. New subdivisions that are being built out. And I think that there are people who will be buying those homes that will not have the understanding of the policy that they need to have so that they can be prepared in the future if there are problems with the trees that are being planted in those subdivisions. I'm assuming that you guys have made the appropriate adjustments over the last few years to not have the kind of flowering, exploding plums that I have in my front yard, so.
All right, George Brown?
Thanks, ma'am. I'd like to go back to the rates one more time. That's on page 31. I'm looking down at grinding. Let's say that, you know, you get a notice from the city, or you notice it yourself, or your neighbor tells you, "Hey, man, your side with the trees pushing the sidewalk up. I'm ready to trip on the bump there." And so you could call the guys, call the Urban Forester Public Works, and say, "Well, I'd like you to come out and grind this down and make it safe." Or a private contractor. And I see that it's $20 per lineal foot, minimum of five lineal feet. So I don't see a mobilization fee. It's just $100 minimum.
That's correct. Yep. It's a lot easier operation for us.
Yes. Yeah. And so, but I noticed that there's no, okay, that's a lineal foot, but there's no width. I mean, depending on how, you might have to go out kind of wide. I mean, evidently, you're happy, though, with this charge for lineal feet?
Yeah, our typical sidewalk's going to be five foot in width, and our minimum is, you know, the five-foot fee. So there are some places where we do multiple grinds. Sometimes we only have to grind off a corner. So there's a lot in the operations itself with trying to collect the slurry that we do, you know, that we create and things like that. So it's our first option typically to address vertical offsets. And those are our typical, our most common complaints are from the trip hazard and under ADA. You know, they've redefined a trip hazard down to a quarter of an inch now, where it used to be a half an inch. So, you know, those are getting a lot tighter specs, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, and then somebody asked, "What would it cost to, what's the total cost per year for all this stuff?" And so I kind of went back to the background portion, and I see that annually, sidewalk inspection program sends out about 250 non-compliance notices, of which 65% are tree-related, and that works out to be about 160 tree-related compliance issues a year. And if you multiplied that by 650, saying that you had to actually replace two sidewalk panels, that works out to be about $80,000 a year.
That's just the ones that we do, though.
Pardon me?
That's just the ones that we do, right?
Right. Well, those are...
Well, no, I mean, I'm just saying if the city did that, it would, took care of all of them, it would be about $80,000 a year this year.
Right. That's, you know, the 250 letters, because we provide, our sidewalk inspector provides so much customer service to get the citizen through the whole process, especially when it's tree-related, that, you know, it kind of limits how much we can do in a year because of the notification process. We do three different notifications before we move forward with doing the work ourselves and then trying to recover that money. So it is a long process sometimes. So that's, we could definitely go higher than the 250, but, you know, our current resources, that's about what we can handle.
Oh, so those are the ones you sent out, but you, did you receive more complaints higher than?
No, you know, we do it two different ways.
The ones you inspected yourself.
It's complaint generated, and it's also through neighborhood inspections that we do. So it's a combination of both of them. Anything that comes into our office as a complaint that becomes a priority to go look at and try to mitigate that hazard, so.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I'm just saying evidently, this is a typical year, and if 160 are tree-related, and it's about 650 per job, it works out to be $80,000 a year. Thank you.
I just had one more comment following up on what Greg brought up, and I'm wondering if with realtors or some other kind of partnership, there could be information that homeowners get when they take ownership of a house that would inform them both about their responsibilities when it comes to sidewalks and also their responsibilities about the streets in front of them. I mean, those are the kinds of things that people don't actually think about until they have to think about them. So I don't know if there's something to be done in that kind of partnership where that information could be made available on a routine basis just to build the knowledge in general that you do have those responsibilities as a homeowner. Just a suggestion.
Couple responses to you and to Councilor Evans is, we actually, through our developer's street tree program contracts that we sign with the developers, we require notification in the CCNRs about who is responsible for planting the street trees in that subdivision. So there's one point of contact. On the other hand, I, as a home buyer, when I was signing the stack of papers that big at closing, I probably wasn't noticing that it was...
Right, too much stuff.
Yeah, there's too much stuff. But I appreciate the comment about public education, and I actually wrote notes down when Councilor Evans was talking about opportunities to get out and talk to neighborhood associations. We do have that on our work plan in urban forestry. In fact, I'm going to be scheduling a meeting with six different groups, including the Neighborhood Leaders Council this coming fall, about our approved street tree species list update, to be talking about in general our urban forestry program and providing that kind of education. So doing outreach by making presentations is something that we are all about. We can do that and will do that and plan to do that. And the last note is that we have a woefully inadequate urban forestry webpage presence right now, and it is under construction, and we will soon be rolling the new one out, which will have a lot of that information that you're talking about.
Yes, George.
You said earlier that the approved list will be updated by the end of the year, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Could we, could you mail that out to us when you, when it's completed? I'm curious. I'd like to see it. And also, I'd like to see what trees are you going to remove from the list, just out of curiosity.
I'd be happy to send it out to you way before it's approved. We'll send that out to you as part of our public outreach process.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.